All right, folks, we're here at the Miami Springs Senior Center and I'm accompanied by Jennifer Graham. Jennifer, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me, Nestor, I appreciate it.
Jennifer, you know, you're running for Miami Springs City Council, the Group Two seat.
Yes.
And, um, you know, for the benefit of our viewers and residents who may not have the pleasure of meeting you, if you're going door to door, can you give us a little bit about your background and who you are? And, uh, you know, what do you do for a living?
Sure. Um, well, first of all, um, my name is Jennifer Graham and I have been very active in this community, uh, going back to 2011, 2012, when I moved in here. I have a list of things.
Sure.
I have over 11 things that I've done here. So I just want to make sure I don't leave anything off because people will call me and say, you didn't say that. So, um, I'm a member, a current member of the Rotary, um, and I've worked on a variety of projects with the Rotary, to include, um, the shoe project, putting shoes on, um, children who are less fortunate than, than mine. I've worked with the Miami Springs Historical Society and Museum. I helped build the museum, that was a 10-year project. Um, and got a lot of experience working with city, working with different people, raising money, um, and planning, and it was a really great experience. I turned out in that role.
Right.
Because of the way that our board works, but I'm still a member and, um...
You did serve as president, right?
I served as president for, um, the, the most terms that you could.
Okay.
Because we have COVID, it was like a leap year in one of the years. But, but in terms of, um, I think I'm still eligible to be a board member. Um, you know, basically whatever the board needs, I, I help out, particularly with technology.
Excellent.
Um, I really think I had a big hand in making the museum flow very nicely because of bringing in technology into the, you know, into the space, which is great.
Excellent.
I also, I'm a member and have been a member of the All Angels Board of Directors, um, All Angels Vestry, which is the church, for those that aren't familiar with that. I was a president of the PTO of All Angels, um, where my daughter started school. And I was the president of the PTO where my son went to school. Um, not president, I'm sorry, um, worked with the president. I was on the board, um, over in Doral.
Okay.
Which is where I was before I moved here, uh, in 2012. We bought our house in 2011. I'm a Pelican, from the Pelican Playhouse. I've been doing that for six years, I'm sure some of you have seen me. Um, and, uh, I've been a great liaison for Virginia Gardens, working both with the Historical Society, um, in terms of making sure that we are capturing their history. Um, and they've been, they were very supportive of the Historical Society when I was there in the museum. But as well...
I know you've been working with Block, uh, over at the, at VGE.
Spencer, all of them. Um, and, um, you know, most recently working on the War Monument Project with the American Legion, Virginia Gardens, and, um, you know, in the War Memorial Monument Team. Uh, and I raised, this summer, they jumped, I jumped in and they asked me to help them and I've, I've raised over $10,000, you know, for them, uh, for the reparations of the, of the monument.
Excellent.
Which has some spelling errors and we need to, you know, do some maintenance to it and beautify it. Um, and maybe we'll have a Gold Mother, you know, um, memorial there. You know, there's still lots of planning and things in the work, but I did write the full marketing plan for that. Um, you know, and, you know, as well worked many hours to, you know, to help raise the money. Um, but our, our marketing plan so far has been successful. Um, and, uh, recently was a member of the, um, Business and Economic Development Task Force.
Yes.
I was the vice chair of the Centennial Committee. Um, and I did all of the historical signs, not the controversial ones, Nestor. The historical signs for the flag project.
Yes.
You know, I, I'm the one who was behind putting together all the content, putting material together. It was a labor of love for the city, people loved it.
Absolutely, people loved it, I know we got a lot of comments on it.
Yeah.
We tried to, you know, share some of that online and people were, were just absolutely loved it.
Well, just people don't know their history, right? So they don't know what great things happened here and what a beautiful spot this is and how lucky we are. Um, and it's a story that is, um, never-ending inspiration. And it's a jump-off point, I think, for our children and the future generations. And, um, there's no stronger story really in Miami-Dade County than this one.
Yeah.
With the birth of flight, um, and the innovations that happened here. Um, you know, the birth of an entire industry, standards, even if you look at the Eastern Airline crash, all the standards that came as a result of that and the jobs that were created. Um, I mean terrible, you know, we don't want to minimize the loss of life with the crash, that particular crash, but there's, there's a whole family of Eastern Airline family and, and all other airlines. And people still come here from all over the world to train. Um, and, you know, so we have such a rich jumping off point, you know, to do great things, um, here in Miami Springs. And I think you're hearing it a little bit, um, you know, but my, my why, you know, what, what, what would prompt me to come forward? I mean, if you listen to this list of, of all the things that I've done with all the different councils, all the different people, and then sitting on and working with the business problems, um, which in my, my day job, aside from being a parent, um, you know, which is a fearful time job. But, you know, I, you know, I've spent a lot of time solving problems with businesses and helping them transform, um, using technology and so forth. And I've, I've, uh, came here in 1989, um, and moved here from the Northeast. And I, my feet actually have been in Miami Springs since 1999. My husband was working his way toward the PGA Tour and we spent a lot of time, um, here in the golf course and, um, using, um, all of the venues, you know, and really enjoying the quality of life.
Right.
This city is based on similar cities that were built in the 1920s in the Northeast. Um, and you really don't see that kind of, um, structural build, um, anymore. It's very hard to find. You find more like the, you know, the types of cities that are more concrete and dense, um, like you have with, you know, the birth of Doral nearly 20 years ago.
Yeah.
So, um, and that brings you into the points related to annexation, which I know is on your list.
Sure.
I mean, you, you asked me, um, you know, and I think you've probably asked everyone, you know, what are you hearing about? You know, people are concerned about parking, they're concerned about their, you know, their ability to get services, um, where they need them, when they want them. Um, you know, they're concerned about their taxes, of course. Um, and they're concerned about annexation. Most of them don't really fully completely understand it. Nor do I think the people in the area that it, you know, has never been annexed, never really had the chance to have proper, you know, um, like support, services, and all the things that go with this town, um, that could be a great benefit, you know, to them. So, um, if they could think of us as an area, um, that they could also market into and have greater, you know, greater audience and reach, um, et cetera. So there's, there's some opportunities there.
Yep, and I know we were gonna get into some of the, the issues and, and things that people bring up. Um, but, you know, going back in terms of you and a little bit about your background. So tell me about your kind of family, sort of, married, kids, what's going on?
Yeah, of course, there's not... I'm definitely married, I'm not available.
Yeah.
You know, please, you know, um, I, you know, I, I have two beautiful children.
Right.
My daughter is, um, here, she's, um, just turned 14, my son is 16. Um, as I mentioned, um, they attended, um, All Angels Academy. Um, we, you know, we homeschool them now. Um, I think many parents have gone through that with homeschooling. We're really enjoying it. I mean, it's a very, you know, it's a very limited slice of life that you get with your children. Um, and, um, my husband is extremely intelligent. Um, he has a very good education and he's an excellent teacher to my children. Um, and so I think, you know, thank you, honey. Um, but I was trying to explain this to a friend of mine the other day. Like, I don't think I could, you know, afford the fee, you know, that it would cost for the personal attention that they get, the one-on-one learning.
Right.
You know, so it works out well, you know. We have, we've, we love the schools here, so it's not a comment on any of the schools here, I think they're great. Um, it just happens to be what's working for us and getting us results.
Sure.
And, you know, if you meet my children, uh, many, many people tell me that they've had great experience with my kids.
Yeah.
And they're also Pelicans, so please come out to the next show. Um, you know, we do, we've been very fortunate to have a wonderful, um, response with the Pelican organization. Um, if you don't know what that is, that's at the Rebecca Sosa Theater at the Community Center. And, um, you know, today's day and age where everybody's technology-driven and they're on their computers and they're in their screens all day. Um, it's a wonderful team sport to be able to do theater and work through, um, you know, work through responding to people, following directions. And I can hear all the parents out on the other side of this going, yeah, they don't follow directions. I like that, you know, being somewhere at times, being responsible to your partner, you know, saying your line when you need to, remembering things, so, uh, you know, so that's also a great ride. We are, we were very blessed in Miami Springs to have Ralph Wakefield, Ralph Man, organization.
Yes.
Um, and I don't remember, it's a Golden Globe or an Emmy or, you know, the thousands of awards that he has received, as well as Nancy Jones, Nancy Jones, this was her dream.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so I just a little plump back out to them.
They're a great pair.
Yeah, and that we are so lucky to have had them here. Um, they've passed their baton to Sam Chesser, who's running Self Help.
Yeah, he runs the Self Help Credit Union.
Self Help Credit Union, and I think they have very good risk management. I mean, they're all aware of what's going on.
Yeah.
In banking, I'm sure there's not a family out there...
Let's not, let's not go into that one today.
That's not concerned about the, you know, concerned about that, right? Um, you know, but, but if you talk about, you know, banking, just for just a second, and you look at your numbers and your, your financial situations, you know, you think about parking. You know, people, some people want to do paid parking. I, I, I think that we have enough taxes today.
Yeah.
Um, on us from all of the cost of inflation, as well as, um, you know, just the standard cost of, of living, um, that, you know, I'm not sure we need another tax on our audience, you know, here in Miami Springs. We, we really need to create an environment for businesses to be, and we need to be prepared to receive businesses. And I think that's what we, um, we struggle with, right? Um, we, we would love to have more than just hair salons, I mean, I love a hairdresser, um, and people...
But your point is well taken, in terms of, yeah, we, we encourage all the hair salons that are here, but from, but a road bust commercial area is more than just that.
Exactly, and so, you know, we need to be able to provide and fulfill, um, have a plan for the city that allows the city to, um, grow, to receive business. So we have, in, in the Economic Development Task Force, um, program, you know, what we, what we discovered and learned, you know, by, by having that opportunity to share with each other and talk on the DS openly, anybody from the public can come out, is that there are some areas that are challenged, more than others, right? Um, so you've got 36th Street, which is kind of a dead zone, you know, for real commercial, um, like, and like if you wanted to go to a restaurant, I mean, it's, it's IHOP, I love sous vide Thai, I'm partial to that, but there's Ping House, there's a couple of places you can go. Um, you know, if you go further down, there's some, um, I think there's a Fritaga, I forget the name.
There's, there's, the Pilot Club is actually pretty nice.
The Pilot Club, yeah, it's been fantastic. I mean, we've had some, we have some places that you can go to, but I think we could do more.
Yeah.
And, um, that's gonna require some zoning and ordinance, um, review and changes. And that's something, you know, that we need to, you know, start looking at very heavily. And it was one of the recommendations that came out of the task force. Um, you know, and clearly it was in the town hall that you attended and probably many of your viewers got a chance to listen to. So we need to address that area, we need to address the parking on the circle. Um, you know, parking in general, you know, for the circle area to be thriving, Down Westwood Drive to be thriving, you know, we really don't need another parking study. I mean, I think we've had so many studies.
Yeah.
I mean, the reality is that the study that we need to have is to be prepared for businesses to come here and to attract businesses here to say, we have the infrastructure to support you. And, you know, to, starting day one, you'll be able to park here and your people, you know, Sushi Saki...
Sushi Saki, yeah.
Sushi Saki, sorry. You know, um, if they were, um, able to have better parking, he'd have more volume.
Oh, 100%.
You know, so the same thing with Jeff, you know, um, with Burrito Ville.
Si Amos has the same, same problem, yeah.
Si Amos, same problem, Paco's the same problem, and, you know, and, um, even Cozy Corner, it, you know, I think probably struggles a little bit, that's, you know, the morning, right, everybody, who doesn't go there? So, um, we had overflow parking, if, when, when we had the old theater, which was abandoned, not really, um, really commercially ready. Um, that building had parking behind it, so maybe you didn't notice.
Right.
But I noticed, I would park back there.
Oh, I parked back there all the time. We'd go to the, the, what was it, the, uh, oh, there was that, uh, where Holloman's used to be. There was a rest, they, they changed restaurants and became, there was a Cuban place later. And we'd go there and, and we'd park in the, in the back all the time. Or if we were going to Burrito Ville, we'd back, park back there all the time.
Yeah, park in the back and then you're walking through and you're not sure if they're gonna see rats or what's gonna come running through that building, and, you know, I mean, anything could come, right?
Yeah.
So, um, it was dark, it was, you know, damp, but, but we had, um, parking there and maybe people didn't notice, they felt like, okay, well, I got a spot, I'm okay.
Yeah.
Um, you know, look, if you're younger and you know that we have a parking challenge and you're able to walk and you can plan accordingly, you know, try and help, you know, your, your neighbors out, be nice, um, you've got older people and, you know, people with babies, trying to get them in and out of cars. Um, I'm sure the veterinarian, um, near to the restaurants would love to, you know, would love to have parking.
Yeah.
Um, you know, where they can take care of the, the pets locally and things like that. So, I mean, I just think we need to be thoughtful, um, in regard to those things and, and we need to kind of drive forward to the, you know, to the future. And having a strong plan to the future is important. And our city manager is gonna be turning, um, you know, turning, turning over the reins.
Right.
To the new city manager. And you had, um, asked this question, I think, about, you know, what are you looking for, right, in a city manager? Um, I'm absolutely looking for a city manager that has the vision and the capability to do business development, as well as manage, um, this, this personnel in the city. I think the person picking up the reins here has a wonderful opportunity in front of them, right?
Yes, Golden Albertary.
They have a staff of people, um, that are very loyal to Miami Springs. And so loyal that we had a city hall meeting just recently, where we heard that maybe people aren't even being, you know, um, paid, like, as well as we'd like to pay them.
Sure.
Right? Um, but again, that's pressure on the city. We have, we have a city manager role and a city finance manager, you know, role, essentially CFO.
Right.
Those roles have to be filled, those salaries are very high.
Yeah.
Right?
In order to be competitive with, with, with the marketplace, yeah.
Exactly, we just gave our city clerk a raise, um, you know, well-deserved, um, of course. I mean, but I'm not overseeing her day-to-day, but, but in the end, um, you know, these are gonna be continued pressures, you know, so we need a city manager that's gonna be able to have his current, the current staff that's there, um, you know, maybe for lack of better, better words, fall in love with them and their ability to do the job, right?
Yeah.
Not just come in and clean house.
Oh, no, no.
Which can happen.
It, it, and sometimes, yeah, it can happen, but, um, it's, you know, people, as much as the good that we have, and, and take care of the good, that, because we have a lot of good people. And, and play accounts, I've, you know, I hear a lot of good things about, about the staff, uh, that, that we have here.
Yeah, we have incredible talent here, we do. And I think this isn't unusual in, I think, in the United States and maybe globally, but, you know, the talent war, right? You know, so we have the opportunity here to ensure that we have, um, somebody who understands how to develop talent, someone who understands how to develop businesses, make sure that the business, because every business owner here is also a talent and, you know, they're a golden egg, you know, for our city, right? I mean, we're so lucky to have the people who are willing to invest their hard capital, their labor, their, you know, their time, um, here in us. So we need to make sure we have the right environment for everyone, as well as, you know, that we're, you know, looking forward to taking care of, of that. So I think that's one of the things, you know, that I'm, I'm looking at for a city manager, just, I know you're not getting to just...
No, it's okay.
But it kind of floats...
Look, we're, we're having, we're trying to keep this format as conversation, you know, and, and, and we're not, um, uh, limited by time or anything like that. And we want, you know, our goal here is for residents to get a feel for you, your personality, and, and, you know, they can, uh, look at all the different candidates and learn about them, get a feel about them. And I want to tell people, it goes, look, watch the videos, because, because at the end of the day, it's not my interpretation of what you told me.
Right.
It's you, you know, how you say things, your personality's coming across through, through the camera. And so we want to share that and give, you know, all the candidates a fair shot. No, it's, and it's true, right? Um, and it's, it's not, uh, like I tell people, it's, you know, I'm not writing in, in the paper, oh, this is what I thought that they told me, and, you know, no, it's, it's your, your voice, your personality coming through, and, and we want to share that with, with, you know, the community. Um, and again, I appreciate, you know, all your, your service here to, to our city. Um, you know, because obviously you've clearly been involved, you know, with, with a variety of, of, uh, groups, including obviously recently with, with the, uh, Economic Task Force.
I was the vice chair of the Centennial Committee, too.
That, that...
And that, I love that project, I really, you know, that was a hard, that was a hard...
And that goes hard to heart with your, your, the history with your, with the Historical Society.
Well, I think, I, I think, you know, it was one of the things I had suggested and one of the council members had been able to bring forward, I don't remember which one, but, um, you know, that we needed to plan, it was in the Economic Development Task Force. We needed to have a committee that was working toward that project.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, and I do understand, you know, what it, you know, our history, but also, um, you know, some of the elements that we need to put in. And I think one of the pieces of feedback that I got, got, working on both those committees, was the incredible organization that I brought to both committees, um, and being able to move things forward. Um, you know, and I think we have a, you know, that, while everyone has an opinion on what the issues may be, you have an opportunity to keep your team working, you know, smoothly. Um, so I think that's an important element of being part of the city council. Um, working, being able to work smoothly with each other and work smoothly, you know, with the city. Obviously, you don't just swallow, hook and anchor everything that's coming at you, right? But you do, you do your homework and you have to think about, um, with the issues at hand and talk to the people in the community about what they think is...
Right.
Is the right move, because you're representing, you know, the entire community. Um, so regardless of, you know, wherever you sit, um, you know, in, in big homes, little homes, you know, all those kinds of things, everybody has a need and they want to be heard. And they want, and they want to know that the people that are sitting on the city council are looking for the best interests of Miami Springs.
Right.
There's not been a single moment here in Miami Springs where I have not demonstrated that over the last, you know, decade plus, um, by, by the work that I've done here. And non-paid work, I never got paid by anybody to do this work. So, um, I'm very much looking forward to being able to apply my skills and my abilities and talents, um, to this role. Um, and I think people that I've met, um, are very pleased to see that I have stepped into the ring, um, you know, and that I have the, the, um, the talents that I do have. And I think many, many people already know that, so...
Well, Jennifer, you, you've, obviously you've gotten involved and, and you've been here since, uh, I believe you said 2011? Did I get it right? 2011, 2012?
I bought my home in 2011 and moved in in 2012, yeah.
Um, so, in your peak time here, what have you loved most about Miami Springs?
Uh, you know, I have spent time all over Miami, um, living in different places, whether it was Miami Beach, whether it was Doral.
Yeah.
Um, in the pre, like, in the very beginning, because Doral wasn't Doral, really, when I lived there. Our Fourth of July, uh, at the time, had been cement trucks.
Wow.
With other countries' flags, if you can imagine. And, um, you know, and I, some people who do know me know that my, um, husband's family founded the United States. They were part of the founders, signers of Declaration of Independence.
Oh, wow.
So when I was watching the dump trucks with a variety of flags, I, you know, it was very, it was very cute. Uh, but it wasn't like St. Patrick's Day down the, you know, down the, uh, Boulevard with all the, uh, the bells and pomp and circumstance, right?
Right.
So then you come over to Miami Springs and you see all these extremely rich traditions, which exist here. Um, it's a very, you know, Americana, Mayberry town, right? Um, and, and we have so much green space, we have so... This town was built with vistas, right?
Right.
So, when you're parking on a swale and you step out of your car and you just take a look and take a look up and out, if you're on any of those big streets that go down, those Parkway-like streets, we have vistas, we have views, and it was designed that way. So you feel like you've landed in like another space-time when you come here. So one thing I love is when we're able to get out, um, we were walking quite a bit as a family. Obviously from my waist, maybe you don't see that, but, but we did, we do, we were walking quite a bit. Um, and I love being, you know, being out there and seeing what, what we can see. So I think it's a pretty, it's been, you know, pretty, like, safe, um, for the most part, to walk around.
Yeah.
I think we have some pressures, you know, coming in with, um, you know, crime like every other city, right? And I think Chief Guzman has built some good plans and he's got some great talent around him, you know, to support us. And he, he needs more resources, of course, right? Um, and we need the bed tax, I'll just add that in there, because this is unfair that we should be paying, you know, for, for everything over in all of those hotels and they're taking all the tax money. That's taxation without representation, right?
Yeah.
So that's, you know, that's a known number. Um, so, um, but I think, I love that, I love the people. Um, the people here, there's so many really interesting people. Um, I got involved with the Historical Society, my neighbor was deeply involved in it. Um, you know, I think you know her, Yvonne Schomburger.
Oh, yes.
Willie Martinez. I mean, Yvonne's moved into a new home now, I'm, I'm not sure what's coming next door, there's a lot of renovation going on.
Right.
But, um, but it's, you know, the depth of history and American history really here, right? With World War I, World War II, aviation, um, you, you look out at, um, really, you can see the greatness of America here in this town.
Yeah.
And like none other. Um, and, uh, you know, I've just, I actually just got goosebumps thinking, because I really do, like, I feel that sense, right? Um, it's a sense of peace when you're here. And so it's, you, you go out into the big wilds of Miami-Dade County and you can come back here and you can be in this oasis, essentially. And I used to hear this from the CIO of Royal Grubin, when he moved here, Bill Martin. Um, and he used to say, yeah, I live in this little town and it's, it's like heaven on earth and, you know, and nobody, like, it's just, I can get anything done that I want. And I moved in and we were talking, ran into each other at an event and it was, I was like, wait a minute, I think I live there. I'm pretty sure I live there, too. So we are, you know, I just, I really, really am encouraged. Um, every day I see this opportunity that we have in front of us to work with each other, um, partner with each other and really get our, you know, our kids and our future, um, whether it's mine, whether it's, you know, yours. Um, if, you know, if we set the table correctly here in Miami Springs, um, we have this ability to inspire people and to, and to allow them to do things. If you look at what, like, Curtis was doing, he was tinkering in his garage. Tell me a story about who else was tinkering. We got Bill Gates was tinkering, um, you know, Steve Jobs was a tinkerer. You know, in the modern world, it's our coders and our computer guys.
You got the Elon Mosks, you know.
The Elon Mosks, exactly. So, you know, that is all around us, right? So, um, and we have artists, we have great artists here, we have, um, you know, great musicians and painters. And so you, you pretty much can find almost anything, and food, great food.
Yeah.
I mean, who doesn't like to eat? I'd like, I'd like to get more restaurants, you know.
Have you seen my ways?
No, no, just don't look down. You know, just have to look out, so...
So, as, all right, so, um, obviously you've been very involved, uh, with, with this. What made you take the, the jump from, okay, I've been involved in all these different boards and groups, and I'm gonna jump in and throw my hat into, you know, run for city council? What, what made the shift there and thinking into running for city council?
I think we have, the, I would, I would say it's probably gradual buildup, right, over time, right? So, as I'm, I'm working with the city, I'm learning more about it, there's, um, obviously the, the museum and the Historical Society, great opportunity, um, there. That's a, it's a business, right? We built it, um, eventually it will have, you know, a different wraparound and, um, more people, more money, more grants coming in there. So we built this business, um, to tell our story and to share our story with people. So that's, that's kind of one step. But then, as I got more involved in the Business Development Task Force, the Economic Development Task Force, um, the Centennial, and I, I realized that I'm able to bring skills to the table that some people, you know, can't.
Right.
Or they don't have, they don't have the, um, ability, you know, to do it, um, the time to do it. Um, I am able to and, uh, I think it's a great opportunity, one for me, um, you know, to learn. I'm always learning, constantly learning, I mean, it's, it's, I'm always on fire, you know, to, for the, the things that are in front of me. Um, and I see great opportunities, um, to help the city develop, um, in the, the areas that are, you know, kind of struggling a little bit. Um, I have a very strong business background, I've been working in Miami-Dade County since 1999. I didn't know a soul, um, one of the top, um, people in my field, um, at this time. And I work with the Fortune 500 and 100, um, you know, today. I also, I also think that, um, the annexation is, that's a tricky animal. And there's no one, and I dare anybody out there that sat on a task force or sat on the councils, um, when I would go up and ask humbly for a couple of bucks to help put the museum up, I mean, you know how hard that was.
Yeah.
Anybody knows it. Um, and we have, and we had an incredible team of people that worked together and we worked very hard and long to build that project. Um, so, um, you know, I think I have had also experiences that are different than all the other team members, right? Um, so I'm used to being in the negotiation room and building, um, and building the, the goodwill and the relationships that are required.
Right.
You know, to get things done as well as, you know, understanding the task at hand, right? Most people see me as someone who gets the job done, you know? And that I think is, will be my legacy, you know, here in Miami Springs. I do think that's gonna be important. I, you know, would like to leave Miami Springs a very strong place where we can really live, where we can work and we can play. And, you know, I'd like to leave that legacy for my children, for your children, and, you know, for, for all of those around us. And provide as well for the seniors, I'm not like, I don't, don't think I don't care. I just drove a senior, you know, today to go help them to, you know, to do something out of the, you know, out of the woodwork, out of the blue to give them a hand, do something.
Right.
So, I mean, we have, we did a great job with this senior center and these, these kinds of programs need to continue. You know, we need to continue to do more with that. You know, people are very, you know, and maybe it's like a sad subject a little bit, but I think people are lonely. You know, they're, after COVID.
Especially post-COVID, yeah.
We've got a lot of mental health stuff going on that, that the facilities like this really help.
Right.
So these, these kinds of facilities need, you know, need our, need our love and attention, whether it's this, this, or places where people gather. And I, I think, you know, that's, that's also part of what drives me, you know, here. So I don't know.
So.
Take me somewhere.
Now, Jennifer, as you're going, you know, now you decided to throw your hat in, you're, you're convinced that, okay, now I wanna go run for office and you're going door-to-door and you brought up a variety of issues, including 36th Street, you brought up parking, you brought up the Economic Task Force and improving the economy, you know, the, the business environment here in Miami Springs, and you brought up annexation. What are residents, of those issues or other issues we haven't covered, what are residents telling you? Jennifer, you know what? This is really the thing that, that bugs me. Or what are, or maybe the thing that's coming up the most frequent with, when you're going door-to-door and talking to residents? What are people telling you?
The most frequent thing I hear is the parking.
Okay.
And then this, and it's probably like a, you know, it's like a point five difference, you know, in score, but in the annexation. And what that does, you know, for, you know, for us.
So you're actually, more people are bringing up annexation versus, let's say, 36th Street or crime and that sort of thing?
I, I think that when you, when you have people going outdoor-to-door in a political season and they're saying, I'm gonna help you reduce your taxes and this is, this is, you know, these are the elements that go into the program and then you say that word, that's what kind of comes out of their mouth. 36th Street is an, is an opportunity, it's a golden opportunity. I mean, I think there's not one of these things that's not threaded really together, right? So it's all about help the business climate. Every single one of these issues is, you know, helps Miami Springs move business forward, right? So whether you clean up 36th Street and get that in tip-top shape, and that will take time, whether, you know, whether you are given the annexation area, which would immediately impact, you know, Miami Springs in terms of numbers, right?
Yeah.
For bringing your taxes down, which people love to hear that.
Absolutely.
You know, so I think, you know, they're, they're all equal and it depends on which side of town you're in.
Yes.
Right? So if you're over in the area that's closer to 36th Street, you hear 36th Street all the time.
Yeah.
You know, I've got homeless people sleeping in my backyard. I've got, you know, I've.
That's just horrible.
I mean, this, I was over at Suzy Ty the other day and I saw lots of people on Fairway Avenue that, you know, maybe didn't have their own place.
Right.
It's a lot of pressure, you know, on us. So 36th Street for sure, but you're gonna hear more of that over there. You hear a lot about the annexation as it relates to, you know, taxes. And I don't know if my timing is such that I'm following people that are, you know, bringing up these issues as well and talking about their platforms, but, you know, I do think people don't understand what, what that really does for us. Cause that injection of revenue, that cash injection really allows us to do a lot more here in Miami Springs. We'd have money that would have to be spent for infrastructure over there.
Yes.
But that would have an immediate dampening down of the tax burden on the citizen here. And then that frees up people here to say, you know, I've always wanted to have, and maybe it's not a hair salon, but, but, you know, I've always wanted to have my boutique here. I want my home office here.
Sure.
You know, they can start thinking and dreaming about where they wanna put their time, you know, and, and energy. Or maybe they have a kid that's gonna be doing coding and computing, you know, or you've got a filmmaker that, that needs space. And we have got that beautiful building, I saw BK, you know, is there.
Right.
You've got, you've got a couple of other ones that have come in, but there's some advantages, right? To, if your taxes are lower because you, you know, we were able to get that annexed area, then maybe that dream that you've had, which you've been tucking some cash away for, you know, you might be able to start, you know? So with the help of your neighbor.
Right.
I mean, you really, you know, the sky's the limit, right? In that area, it needs the right zoning to be able to get the right, you know, the right support, you know, there. So, but it, the issues are very, very, very depending on where you go.
Where you go. And that makes sense, right? You know, for people closer to 36th Street, that's a bigger issue for them. People over here may be more interested in, in, in the annexation issue and of course the parking, as you said earlier. One of the, the issues that the new council will have pretty quickly will be selecting a new city manager. And, you know, you were alluding to that earlier in terms of this is gonna be a CEO position, there's also the CFO position, being the finance director. What are, what are you looking for most in, in the new city manager?
I'm looking for an individual, obviously, that meets all of our standards ethically, right? And understands talent, how to develop talent, understands how to, to do business development, because that is going to be happening in Miami Springs. And being able to have that solid plan, to be able to work with a team of people and provide oversight or, you know, provide some support around that to help make sure that happens. You know, but, you know, the city manager is responsible to present the budget and all kinds of things to us, that they need to have, you know, strong skill sets in. So it's not just, you know, it's not just one or the other, you know? So, but I think if they looked at extra things that would make me delighted, it's somebody that's got the skill set to help us have the proper plan for our town.
Right.
Our proper long-term plan. And that's, you know, you need, you need the short-term goals, the three, the five, the 10. You've gotta have somebody that can say, this is the vision, you know, for Miami Springs. And, and a vision that allows, I mean, cause another thing that comes up, and people, people bring this up to me all the time, I hate that building, I hate this, I like Adobe, I don't like Adobe.
Right.
Somebody who can have respect and navigate that landscape, you know, navigate that landscape so that we can have a functioning circle, functioning 36th Street, et cetera, right? So it's, it's gotta be somebody who's got really, really good skills.
Appreciate that. As far as improvements that you would like to see completed, something that, that gets finalized and wrapped up, what are some projects that you would like to see completed here in Miami Springs?
We, hands down, need a parking garage. I mean, I've talked about this, you must have a parking garage, you've got to have a forward plan. So who cares what the congestion is today, tomorrow, when that building opens? What is your plan, you know, to park more cars so that we can all get into these places that we are going to be delighted by and have experiences at, right? So I wanna go get my, you know, there's a Sloan's over in City Place, you know, we have, I wanna go to Sweet, Sweet Treats, I think is, you know, where I get all my birthday cakes. I wanna, you know, I wanna be able to, you know, have an experience. I want my daughter to be able to go with her girlfriends and get her tea and coffee and little chocolates and, you know, have her time, you know, in a safe environment, right?
Right.
So don't, you, I mean, I want, you know, I, I want it to be that we have quality places that we can go to, you know, and, and have a good time at. But, but no one is gonna come here unless they can park. No one. And I love you, Julio, Madame, I do.
Uh huh.
I do. But I have yet to see people not wanna drive their car in Miami Springs. Because we're very different than Miami Beach. Now, you could Uber from the hotels on 36th Street, you might even have a trolley that brings people down Curtis Parkway. You know, and I think Julio was correct at the time that he gave the recommendations in his share and his view of experiences. I totally agree with him. But I think we need a mixed facility, we need to put the police department in a building that's proper.
Yeah.
You know, for them, that, you know, and maybe there's room even, you know, to give them a little bit more. We need that parking garage, you know, completed so it gives more spaces and some planning. And that's, that's like the first, that's not the end game, right? That's the, that's the baby step.
The initial piece.
That's the initial piece that gives us a little breathing room while they, they work hard to attract the right businesses here. I mean, I don't know if, if there's a Google, if there's a, you know, an up-and-coming startup that needs a, you know, needs a house, you know, and that will like the layout that we have here and wants to do some development.
Right.
And they've gotta wanna be able to come here. And then they, and the initial steps are gonna have to have a place to put their vehicles, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, and you've got the building that may or may not be rented out, I don't know. I mean, you, you've done a few articles on the building.
Yeah.
The new building and the parking there. What if those folks have guests?
Oh, look, I, I, I'm, it's no surprise to anybody who's watching this, I have been very critical of the project on one Curtis Parkway. You can't tell me 52 apartments, 98 parking spaces for 52 apartments is insufficient, plus add on, what is, 15, 15 retail units, some which may be restaurants. Restaurants alone require a ton of parking. There is not enough parking that was ever done, whatever parking study was jaded.
But even if they did, even if.
This is baloney.
Well, even if, no matter what parking study was done, we are bigger, we are denser, we are growing, we are growing. You know, so this isn't even about the past, it's about the future. We're growing.
Right.
It's what's coming. What do we want to come? How do we keep a Mayberry feel? Are you running out of tea?
No, we're good, we're good.
So how do we keep a Mayberry feel here in, you know, Miami Springs and have proper growth and, you know, and keep it orderly and, and kinda clean and nice? You know, I think at the time, you know, the, I wasn't a big fan, were you, of the movie theater that was broken down?
Oh, no, that thing needed to be, be redeveloped a hundred percent.
Right, so, I mean, we are dealing with, we have to deal with the future.
Yeah.
And, and the future is at hand. We have green space on Westward Drive. I've seen some studies and people have shared where we could do this and I, I know because I've spoken about it, Westward Drive, if you rip Westward Drive and you change the parking, you get seven spaces, seven.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's, that's that, right? I mean, it's not even my full two hands.
Right.
So, you know, you, you absolutely gain a lot more spaces if you have some mixed parking, you know, in, in the space that's already a parking lot, which could use a facelift.
Yes.
You know, a little facelift. I did talk to, I think it was Ulysses, and I know that they're gonna be putting in, you'll be very happy to hear, some LED lighting. You know, I did speak to him and I know that that was already being done.
Right.
So I thank you, you know, for that. And, you know, we could do something that's attractive there, right? Cause you've got some homeowners, you know, in there.
Yeah.
You know, and then you've got all the, the Holly's Dance Studio moms that come in, you know, and the Greek Deli people. And I, I did have some conversations with.
And there's constant in and out for the post office.
Post office. And I've, I've had the conversations with, and there's a dentist officer too, but I've had the conversations with restaurant owners and they don't feel at this time, many of them do not feel that paid parking is really helpful to them. In fact, they think it's not helpful. So when you look at paid parking on the street and you do pay for parking, you're, you're putting a risk on the restaurant owner that his people and his traffic, that they're gonna come and they're gonna be willing to pay that fee on top of the inflated fees that they have today in their, in their restaurants.
Yeah.
I think they have enough pressure on them. I think today, where we sit today is restaurants have a lot of pressure on them for the cost of food, the cost of labor, getting that, you know, giving us a good, a great experience that is probably not fair to say, okay, well now you're gonna bear, you know, your patron is also gonna bear the cost of paid parking.
Right.
Or your employee. So I think we gotta look a little bit more carefully at that. That doesn't mean to say that if somebody wanted to put up their own garage and they wanted to charge you for it.
That's a private thing, right?
That's a private matter, you know? Or if in the future, five years from now or 10 years from now, something changes, it's, you know, it's not an absolute, but today with the cost of inflation and, you know, the pressure that we're under today, I think it's, that's pretty, it's a pretty big ask.
I appreciate that. You know, we're, we're getting down here towards the end, so I always like to ask.
No!
Yeah, so I always.
You can't stop!
I always like to ask, why should people come out and vote for you?
A few moments later. As I started speaking before you ran out of battery, that I just think if you look at the full body of work and commitment that I've already given Miami Springs and then, and the results of that work, it's all been good, all been very positive. I have a good understanding of working with the city. I've had the experience of understanding the challenges of the, the current economic climate. And I have different business skills than other team members. And I think they should vote for me because I am the right candidate. I am really the best candidate for this role. I'm built for this role. I've been doing this work, all kinds of work for Miami Springs. And I think the strongest story sits in the Historical Society Museum, it's probably the best evidence of it. I'm a hard project in it, at that. I think you can see I know how to get it done. And, you know, we, we can do great things together. And I think if you look at what I've done and look at the war monument, you know, I was asked to help on the war monument.
Right.
And basically a week, I'd raised $5,000 plus, given them a marketing plan, plus you raised another basically $5,000 because of my marketing plan.
Right.
So, I mean, I think I understand and I can help, you know, deliver the results for the people. And I'm conscious of where people are, where the restaurant owners are, where the, where the people living are. They want, they wanna be able to live, work and play here. I do have a good feel for it and a good feel for how to, how the city council works. You know, and I think I'm able to contribute there and provide, I think if you give me a shot.
Yeah.
You'll see that the results are gonna be beyond what you dreamed could, could be. That's why I think you should vote for me. I know you will.
And Jennifer, for those who, who are watching this and may have questions or, or wanna reach out to you directly, what's the best way for, for residents to reach out to you?
Sure, I have an email. It's Jennifer Graham, MiamiSprings@gmail.com.
So Jennifer Graham, G-R-A-H-A-M, for Miami Springs, at, sorry, Jennifer Graham.
Jennifer Graham, MiamiSprings@gmail.com.
Got it.
So that's gonna be two M's, folks.
Jennifer Graham, Miami Springs, at gmail dot com. Perfect.
Shoot me an email. I'm usually over at church on Sundays at Old Angels at 10:30. You can stop, you know, by, people see my house, sign at my house. You know, just, just grab me and I'm certainly helping. My number was in the paper, 305-801-1823. If there's something you have a question about, you know, please give me a call.
So they get that 305.
801.
801.
18.
1823.
23.
Perfect.
Yes.
Awesome. Jennifer, we definitely appreciate you coming down, joining us, sharing your message and making yourself available to the public. You know, we know residents, you know, a lot of the serious residents who, who actually do go out and vote and take their vote seriously, do spend the time and we, we see it in terms of they're looking at the different candidates, they're, sometimes I see it in terms of, you know, people are searching, they're searching for the names of the candidates. So it's nice to see people are, are, are doing their due diligence, they're researching the candidates before they go out and vote. When can people go out and vote?
So if you have an absentee ballot, you're welcome to, you know, mail it in. We have early voting March 31st at the city hall. That's March 31st through, through April 1st, I believe.
Yeah.
And then we have voting at the country club on the 4th, starting at 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, I believe.
Yeah. And all they have to do is be in line by 7:00 PM and they can, they can, they can vote.
They will, they will take good care of you, good care of you. And I look forward to your support, Miami Springs.